Regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, August 24, 2023. If you would, please take a moment to silence your cellphone. If there is an item that you wish to speak on tonight that's on our agenda, I ask that you fill out one of the blue slips you'll find at the table at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you turn it in to anyone here at the staff desk. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Lewis. Please stand.
Dear heaven and father, I hope we have a great meeting. Let us make a good decision and do the right thing. Thanks.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Asher was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Andropon?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantel?
Here.
Mr. Reshar?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremonte?
Here.
And President Landry?
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. 1A Appearance by Mr. Stitch Guillory, candidate for Calhoun Parish Sheriff. Mr. Guillory, if you would, just state your name and address. It can be a business address for the record.
My name is Stitch Guillory. I reside at 2604 Amen Corner, West Lake, Louisiana. So that tells me I'm headed in the right direction.
Amen.
Let me say it's my honor, my pleasure to be here today to let you know that I am a candidate for Sheriff of Calhoun Parish. I've served as chief deputy for the last almost 20 years under Sheriff Manquuso. There's nobody in this race more prepared and has more experience to be your sheriff than me. On day one, I know exactly what it takes to do the job. I know the personnel. I know the office. I pledge to work hard, to continue our sheriff's office in the direction that it's going. I tell people all the time, we don't have a good sheriff's office. We have a great sheriff's office. We solve a lot of crime. We provide a lot of services, and we do what needs to be done. I realize as sheriff, I can't do everything alone. You have to have partnerships, and one of those partnerships is the police jury. You provide funding for our office. You provide space for our office, and we appreciate that. I pledge to work with you, to do what's right and what's best for Calhoun Parish, not only for myself, but for the parish. Every one of you gentlemen up there, I know you personally. We've had talks and the staff. I know each and every one of those, and they know the type of person that I am and who I am. I'm not going to change. I've been Stitch Guillory for 61 years. I'm going to be Stitch Guillory because that's who I am. I'm not trying to tell you how old Brian is, but he graduated with me.
I'm still 60.
For a very short time. But my pledge to you is to work hard to be your sheriff. I don't play golf. I don't hunt. I don't fish. I don't have a camp. I don't work on cars. According to my wife, I don't fix nothing around the house. But I promise you, I'll be a good sheriff. You know, God blesses each of us with talents, and it's our responsibility to find out what talent God gave us and to use that talent to the best of our knowledge, to advance our careers and advance us as people. I can tell you, the talent that God gave me is the ability to communicate with people, to understand people, and to work with people, and that's what I pledge to do. You know, there's an old saying that you know the dog you got. You don't ever know the dog you're going to get. Most, every one of you know me, so you know what you're getting. And by the way, I'm a pretty good dog. I'm house-trained too. But I promise you, I'll work hard as your sheriff, and I hope, you know, that you consider me on October the 14th. I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions for Mr. Guillory? Mr. Guillory, you have a question for Mr. Guillory? Go ahead.
Mr. Stitch, I just want to say, I love every time that we're able to go and sit and talk with you, and your door is always open for us. So just continue that, and congratulations on everything.
I promise you, I'll have an open-door policy, just like we've always had. You don't have to have an appointment. If you're going to come see me unannounced, bring food.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Guillory?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
1B Appearance by Mr. Bobby Holmes, candidate for 14th Judicial District Court Judge. Mr. Holmes, if you would, when you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. It can be a business address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Good evening. Bobby Holmes, 700 Briarwood Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70605. My name is Bobby Holmes. I'm running as a candidate for District Court Judge, Division F, right across the street. I've been practicing for 14 years. I am currently your Chief of Litigation at the Calhoun Parish District Attorney's Office. Glad to be here with this great body and administrators who are present. I wanted to tell you, ran in '20, now running again. I walk into the courthouse every day, and I see those pictures hanging up on the wall, and I'd like to say we have great judges in Calhoun Parish. I would like to become among that number. My experience is geared in the courtroom, and what I want to talk to you about, we all watch KPLC and understand the needs of our community as it relates to public safety. That is what I've been doing as an administrator at our District Attorney's Office, trying to help keep our parish safe from violent offenders, trying to give second chances to those who have mental illness, who suffer from substance abuse, and we want to bring that to the bench for our entire parish. And so, as you know, the election's October 14th. We're trying to get out and meet as many people as we can. Our election section is very unique. It encompasses most of our African-American, traditional African-American neighborhoods, LeBlu, Iowa, runs south all the way down to Goche Road on Highway 14. So this is a large district. It's one-third of our voting population. And so, I'm asking for a vote for me. I'm the only candidate in this race that has that practical experience that goes to the courtroom day in and day out. I walk that about 1,000 feet from 901 Lake Shore over to 1001 Lake Shore, I tell everybody. And I stand before juries. I stand before judges. I've done that throughout my career, protecting victims. I've been a civil attorney as well, worked at Hoffest Deville and several other firms where I've had the opportunity to represent our citizens. And so, that's the experience we need on our bench. We have nine judges and a magistrate. I would say we have some of the best in the state, and I would like to join them. I need your support, your constituents within my district. I ask everybody to go and look at the resumes because that's really, really important. I tell everyone, my resume is geared and tailored to the courtroom, and that's what we're running for, and I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Guillory?
Yes, Mr. Bobby. I'm glad to see that, as I, many meetings from Washington, D.C. on through to throughout the United States, that mental illness is a key issue that is going to be coming up this year, and I'm glad that's going to be on your focus. So I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Holmes? Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Good luck to you, sir. 1C Appearance by Ms. Emily Fennett Parker, candidate for District 8 Police Jury. Ms. Parker, if you would, state your name and address for the record. It can be a business address.
Emily Fennett Parker. That's my address. 2436 Jolie Bois Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70605. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak in front of you all today. As mentioned, my name is Emily Fennett Parker, candidate for Calhoun Parish Police Jury seat in District 8. Guy Brain, who sits before us today, represents this area, and he has represented this area for the last 18 years, but decided to retire, which leaves the seat open for October 14th election. For those of you that have not had the pleasure of meeting, I'm a product of southwest Louisiana. I've graduated from Barb High School and a graduate of McNeese State University with a degree in marketing and management. I've been married to my husband, Dax, who has been a behavioral health care executive at Ocean's Health Care for the past 14 years. We have two boys, 13 and 11, that are very active in outdoors and sports, and it seems like their main focus right now seems to be baseball. So we'll see where they end up. I'm a former marketing executive at Le Bears Casino Resort. Spent 15 years working my way from the bottom all the way up to the executive level. Knowing Le Bears would provide a huge economic impact to our area, I assisted with the grassroots of getting the gaming license passed for our area. Leaving Le Bears after 15 years was not an easy decision. It was a very hard decision. Love the company, love the people, but realized the need to stay home and give back to the community, but just in a different way. Which brings me to my next point. You're all probably wondering, why am I running for a police jury? The answer you always hear is, I want to make a difference, and I've been doing it for my children. Well, obviously, yes. I think we all want to make a difference, and we all want southwest Louisiana to be a better place for our kids to grow up. But the real answer is, why am I running? It's so much deeper than that. My family has a long history of service in this community, so I've learned by example, whether it's my mom serving on the Ward III Recreation Award, or my dad fighting for federal and state dollars for our roads and highways. When I left the casino, my main goal was to get out there and volunteer on a few boards, the few, the boards that made a difference in our community as well as our youth. I jumped on the American Petroleum Institute Board because of their efforts to support McNeese and the scholarships that we give, as well as their support for the Boys Village Foundation. I jumped on the Boys Village Board, where I currently serve as the Board Treasurer. I serve on the Advisory Board for Kiamega at McNeese as their National Philanthropy, which is Make-A-Wish advisor, community service advisor, and the marketing advisor, to help grow and develop those ladies to become leaders in our community. This year, I also reinstated my membership into the Junior League, and all of these things, and I do it because of all the great things that the Junior League does for this community. This year, we'll be celebrating our 90th year. I do all this because of the commitment and invested interest in this area. Now, look, I did not make this decision to run in a vacuum. I took five months, visited with friends, family, community leaders, and business professionals. I listened to what they had to say. I took away from all these conversations, and District 8 has been in good hands for the past 18 years. Having accessibility to your police jury, knowing that your police jury is listening and working to solve problems. The job of a police jury is not necessarily glamorous, I get that. It's taking calls for drainage, trash wasn't picked up, et cetera. But it's the job of the police jury to make sure these issues get solved, to be the squeaky wheel for the people in the district, and that's what I will be. My vision for the future, infrastructure seems to be the buzzword of the year, so I'm aware of the projects underway that are going to positively impact traffic flow and drainage for District 8, such as the Gravity Drainage Project and the Ham Reid Extension. I want to continue this work by working with the other 14 jurors and staff, moving District 8 and Calhoun Parish in the right direction. So let's work together to take our parish from good to great. People who live in District 8 are my friends and my family. I've been laying the groundwork to be an effective representative practically my entire life. It would be a great honor to serve the people of District 8, and I'd appreciate the constituents of District 8 for their vote on October 14th. Ballot number 71. Early voting begins September 30th. Mr. Brain, you're the only one in the police jury that can vote for me, so I'd appreciate your vote as well.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I think we may have some questions. Mr. Brain?
Emily, good luck to you. I know you're going to do a great job. I know these guys up here need some straightening out when I'm not here. You know, having a lady on the board would just change the whole dynamic, so, but congratulations to you, and I hope the best for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you. Ms. Parker, I know you come from a good family, good Lake Charles gal. I admire the fact that you're running while your children are still in school. Mine are that age. They've been, I mean, you know, since they were, my daughter, since she was eight years old, she's 16 now. It's, it has its moments, but I think my kids appreciate it. They are a little more aware, and I think your kids will too. And again, I admire for somebody that's going to take this while they have plenty to do and take this on. So best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Parker, are you by any chance kin to either Courtney Fennett or Bob Fennett?
Yes, Courtney Fennett is my dad, and Bob Fennett is my uncle.
You come from good stock.
Thank you. I think so, too.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Parker? Thank you, Ms. Parker. Good luck to you. 1D Appearance by Mr. Tom Watkins, reference to the Restore Louisiana Small Business Loan Program. Mr. Watkins, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Tom Watkins, 5058 West Main Street, Homer, Louisiana, and I'm not running for office. But I am here today to offer some free money. I'm here with the Restore Louisiana Small Business Loan Program. This is a HUD-funded program that's designed to assist small businesses that were impacted by hurricanes, LARA or Delta, or, for Calhoun Parish, the May 2021 flood. It is a loan package that is at 0% interest. If you pay back 60% of the loan, 40% is forgiven, as long as you, you know, are still in compliance with the programmatic requirements. In essence, you are timely making your payments, and you haven't spent the money on things you're not supposed to spend the money on. The program has been open for about three months. We have an office here at the Seed Center on Ryan Street, fully staffed. We would appreciate y'all's help and your staff and you guys, some of which have already been helpful in helping us get the word out to those in the office. We, I think there's perhaps some material in your electronic agenda with reference to the program. We have a website where you can go online and apply for the loan, or you can call us at the 1-800 number, and for whatever it's worth. The 800 number is 800-630-3791, and online at scpdc.org, you can find the application there. So it's the easiest money out there. It is for just small businesses. It's not for, you know, everyone, between 1 and 50 full-time employees. So it's a great program, and whatever y'all might be able to do to assist getting the word out, we sure would appreciate it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Watkins? Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. On the actual program itself, is there a deadline for this application process?
Well, right now, so we are teamed up with the Division of Administration through the Office of Community Development. OCD has a deadline of December 31st of 2023 for the application process to be completed. However, I will say that there's, you know, you never know, but I think there's a strong likelihood that it will be extended. But as we speak, yes, December 31st, 2023.
So basically, if someone just walks into the office itself and starts the application process there, or everything starts online?
That's correct. Our staff will assist you with all of the information that you're going to need, answer any questions you might have, upload documentation for you, or if you feel IT-worthy enough, you know, you have those skills, you can upload everything yourself onto the website, and we'll take a look at it. We take phone calls, walk-ins, whatever it is. We want to get it done. We want to get it done. There's, we got $50 million to loan out, $50 million program.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say this, if I could, one more second. These loans are between $10,000 and $150,000, and can go as high as $250,000, with an exception approved by OCD.
Mr. Guillory?
No, I just needed the phone number. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, we'll make sure to get that on site.
He answered the question. I was, I wanted to know what the dollar limit was, but you answered it. Thank you.
Seven-year term to, seven-year term loans. You pay 60, it's a seven-year term loan. If you pay back 60%, 40% is forgiven. Yeah, so it's a, it's a good deal.
Sounds like a bargain. Any other questions for Mr. Watkins? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And I guess, Mr. Bowlin, could y'all, which it may already be, is that on, is that information on Seagov?
I can check. I don't know for certain. I can ask Mr. Hayford?
Yeah, if, Tom, if you would, let's try to make sure we have that information on the Seagov channel. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir. 1E Presentation of Certificate to Police Jury. Ron Hayes, in recognition of receiving the Southland Conference's Binance Sports Media Award. Mr. Hayford, I have a motion to defer for 90 days.
Good evening. Tom Hayford, Communications and Media Director for the Police Jury. Ron is stepping down here. I'm a little shocked that you guys would allow a couple of old radio guys a chance with an open microphone here to speak. It could last all night.
No, we have a three-minute time limit.
I promise to be brief. If Ron rambles on, I'll tell him we need to go to a commercial break. It's the only way I know how to stop him. So Ron, our friend and our colleague, and my broadcast partner for these many years, recently was honored with the Louis Bonnet Sports Media Award for outstanding contribution in the field of sports information, journalism, broadcasting, or other media focused on the Southland Conference or member institutions. When Ron began broadcasting McNeese sports, Jimmy Carter was the president, Terry Bradshaw was winning Super Bowls, and the starting middle linebacker for the McNeese Cowboys was a undersized but hard-hitting youngster named Darrell Burkell. During his tenure, Ron has performed play-by-play, color commentary, and sideline reporting, while also hosting many coaches' shows and emceeing countless banquets and other sports events. He has been part of the team broadcasting football, men's basketball, women's basketball, baseball, and softball, sometimes more than one sport in a day. He has been on AM radio, FM radio, broadcast TV, cable TV, streaming audio and video, and now, with the introduction of ESPN Plus, an app. You couldn't have predicted that back in the 70s, that that was going to occur. I have a quick story about ESPN Plus. We began these broadcasts last spring, and Ron and I were doing a softball game. It was between the Cowgirls and the raging Cajuns. And they forgot to give us some pretty important information about these broadcasts on ESPN Plus. ESPN requires that we be neutral. Forty-plus years, 20-plus years, we're Cowboy fans, and we created something of a stir on the internet with the fact that we were homers and that we wouldn't call them the University of Louisiana. And in fact, Ron let loose with a couple of accidental USLs, which was, hey, old habits, old habits. What are you going to do? So in these 45 years of Ron's broadcasting career, he has represented McNeese State University in more than half of the 50 U.S. states, including exotic locations such as Honolulu, Hawaii, Miami, Florida, Orano, Maine, and Conway, Arkansas. He has endured traveling on planes, in cars, on buses, and frequently having to listen to stories from Johnny Sidum. He has suffered through countless press box meals of questionable origin. They were free. He has commented on remarkable athletes like Joe Dumars and Kerry Joseph for the Cowboys, and greats from the opposition such as Karl Malone and Kurt Warner and many others. Ron and I first worked together on a McNeese broadcast in 1995. It was a Fox 29 telecast from Harrisonburg, Virginia, when McNeese played James Madison. And we have been together since 2000 on the radio team. I am pleased to call Ron a great work colleague, a tremendous friend, and since he has been elected to the police jury, he is my boss. For all of these efforts, I am pleased and honored to be asked to recognize him tonight as a recipient of the Southland Conference's Louis Bonnet Sports Media Award for his ongoing service to MSU. Ron, if you would step forward, let me read this. Presented by the Calhoun Parish Police Jury on this day, the 24th day of August 2023, to Mr. Ron Hayes, in honor and recognition of being selected as the recipient of the Southland Conference's 2023 Louis Bonnet Sports Media Award, and celebrating 46 seasons as part of the Cowboys and Cowgirls broadcasting team. Congratulations on your achievements.
Very good.
I just want to say that half of this award belongs to Tom. He has contributed more than I can ever tell you about the McNeese broadcast team. He's, you know, I almost feel like it's a marriage, you know, for better, for worse, sickness and health, win or loss, whatever the case may be. And I have found a secret, by the way, to getting awarded these things. You outlive the competition. That's pretty much what I've done in my day. A long time ago, a lady by the name of Janet LaBord came to me when I was running an insurance business in Salford, and she said, would you like to do some broadcast? I said, what are you talking about? She said, well, the guy that's doing it hates it, and we want to know if you would like doing it. I said, well, that sounds good. What's involved? She said, well, you'll sit in probably the best seat in the house, and if you're lucky, you'll get paid something for it, and you watch sports. And I said, well, I do that anyway. She said, that's why you'd be a natural fit for this. And that started about 46 years ago with this whole situation. The thrilling part that we've been through, we've frozen in press boxes that didn't have windows. We have eaten more rubber chicken than you can shake a stick at. We have handled some abuse at times. I'll never forget when McNeese played LSU, and we're driving down the street fixing to go park, and of course, we're Louisiana guys. And I never had the bird shot at me more in my life than that day, as we were driving in the McNeese bus, and these people were giving us a warm and thankful reception. We also had the distinction of calling the game when McNeese held Leonard Fournette to 14 yards. Of course, the game was called on account of lightning and rain, and so nobody played anything after that, but it's a nice thing to think about it. Anytime your name is mentioned in the same sentence as Louis Bonnet, you're to be honored, and I am honored. Louis is a longtime sports information director at McNeese. He's been around McNeese since, I think, '52, '42, something like that, and just to see him operate was worthy, and to be honored by this is something that humbles me. Thank you so very much, and thank you, Tom. Thank you, buddy.
That was good. I enjoyed that.
Do your job up here.
2A Approved An Application For A New Liquor And Beer Permit. Mr. Craig's staff recommends one new application be approved. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2B Adopted Ordinance Approving The Following Rezoning Application At 7483 Highway 27 South And Ward 4 To Rezone From Agricultural To Light Industrial To Allow An Industrial Development, A Contractor's Office Shop And Storage Yard. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Andropon. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2C Adopted Ordinance Condemning And Authorizing The Demolition And Removal Of One Manufactured Home Located At 5168 LA Little Road And Carlos. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 2C? 5168 Little Road And Carlos. No one here, no blue card. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to, I'm going to motion to, to... I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna motion to, to defer this for another thirty days. We've seen some progress. Um, we're not there yet. I've, I've talked to, uh, staff, and I think we can, we can get out of this, um, with everybody happy, so, uh, give them, give, give our staff, and I appreciate Dan, uh, Bruce Sword, uh, for his work on this and willingness to, you know, continue working with Mr. Myers. Um, we're gonna do that pending an electrical inspection, and, uh, we gotta get in touch with him, and, and, um, y'all know what's going on, so, uh, motion to defer for thirty days.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont to defer for thirty more days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Two D, proclaim the week of August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as Louisiana Flood Awareness Week in Calcasieu Parish. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Two E, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following owners to show calls at a public hearing on October fifth, twenty twenty-three as to why the structures on the properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. Number one, forty-one sixty-seven Green Tree Lane in Gillis. Number two, twenty-four twenty-one Benita Drive in Lake Charles. Number three, eighty-five fifty-nine Gulf Highway, Lot Two Eighteen, Lake Charles. Number four, eighty-five fifty-nine Gulf Highway, Lot Thirty-nine, Lake Charles. Number five, eighty-five fifty-nine Gulf Highway, Lots One Thirty-eight, One Seventy-six, Two Nineteen, Two Thirty-five, Two Thirty-nine, and Two Forty-one in Lake Charles. Number six, ninety-two forty-eight Gulf Highway in Lake Charles. Number seven, twenty-nine fifty-one Flora Road, Lake Charles. Number eight, seventy-two oh-eight Curtis Lane, Lake Charles. Number nine, twenty-nine sixty-six Cardinal Lane in Gillis. Number ten, one oh-three Jersey Drive in Topsy. Number eleven, nineteen seventy-five Walker Road in Carless. Number twelve, fifty-five sixty-two Carmier Road in Vinton. Number thirteen, five sixty-six Edson Street in Sulphur. Number fourteen, one twenty-four Long Pine Drive in Sulphur. Number fifteen, thirty-nine oh-nine East Burton Street in Mossville. Number sixteen, twenty-six fourteen Jerry Street in Sulphur. Number seventeen, four oh-three Phillips Road in Westlake. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Andrew Pont on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three B, approve the Budget Committee report dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Barti.
Mr. President, the Budget Committee of the Police Jury met today, August twenty-fourth, at five fifteen P.M., and recommends the following items be approved. One A, Ward One, twenty-five thousand dollars for Ward One Fire Protection District Number One for the purchase of firefighting equipment. One B, Ward Two, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for Ward Two Fire Protection District Number One for the construction of a communications room. One C, Ward Three, sixty thousand dollars for Ward Three Marshal's Office, matching funds for the purchase of a mobile command unit. One D, Ward Four, District Twelve, a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars for Ward Four Fire Protection District Number Two for the purchase of communication equipment. One E, Ward Four, five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, that's one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars from Districts Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, and Fifteen, Ward Four Marshal's Office for the purchase of an electronic fingerprint scanner and accessories. The committee also recommends that the police jury adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget deviations in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-nine thirteen-ten. This is the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move as recommended by the committee.
Thank you, Chairman Barti. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, a second by Mr. Braim.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew Pont.
If I may, for the benefit of those that aren't on the Budget Committee, uh, one of the things that we brought up, or I brought up at the very end of the meeting, was asking or requesting staff to do a wage analysis, uh, for our Public Works Department, for those working in the field. Uh, we have neighboring parishes, we have the state, uh, increasing their rate of pay, and it is vital to the services that we provide to our constituents throughout this parish to have a, a well-staffed, uh, Public Works Department. Uh, so I'm, I don't think a motion, uh, is, is needed, but I'm happy to offer one if, if required. So, um, a- and I know other Juars have heard similar things that I'm sharing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Uh, a motion won't be necessary, though I think they heard you loud and clear. Okay, um, where were we? We had a motion, a second? I guess any, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three C, adopt a resolution ratifying a local government proclamation of state of emergency, which proclaimed a state of emergency to exist in the Calcasieu, in the Parish of Calcasieu due to current drought conditions. I have a motion by Mr. Markentail, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on, three D.
Three D, adopt a resolution ratifying Executive Order twenty twenty-three dash oh-one, which imposed a parish-wide burn ban in the Parish of Calcasieu. Uh, if we could, Mr. Mays, would you come up and give us an update on the fires in Beauregard Parish? Things are a little smoky, especially into Quincy.
Uh, good evening. Jared Mays with, uh, Calcasieu Parish, O'Self. Uh, Monday, they started a fire up in, uh, Beauregard Parish in the Singer area towards, uh, Maryville. Uh, they got it extinguished. It reignited on, uh, Tuesday, so since Tuesday to present, it's been burning. We're approximately, uh, fifteen to eighteen thousand acres that are burned right now. We're losing, using all assets and resources from Calcasieu and Beauregard. They're starting to pull from, uh, neighboring, uh, parishes and the state. We've able, uh, been able to deploy, if you, uh, look at the picture previous, we, uh, deployed our communications device Tuesday night to Maryville, 'cause they were gonna evacuate. Was able to, uh, launch cell signal from our device up there to be able to maintain sa- signal for the evacuation. They, the, uh, winds had shifted and moved north, so they didn't have to evacuate, so we was able to break that down and come back down to Singer. We currently have the Mobile Operations Command Center set up in Singer, and we have, uh, a personnel up there that's been working communications for them. Today, he turned into the Operations, uh, Chief for the Operations to give some customer relief, uh, 'cause he understands our fire services better from Calcasieu Parish. Uh, we've used all fire departments and then to include the industries we're using now, firefighters for requests to come up there and help support it because of the heat and the, uh, fire. And if you're not, uh, serving in Beauregard Parish, you're covering neighboring districts in the fire districts, and, uh, we're having several flare-ups. And just to give you, uh, uh, last week, uh, we had fifty-one, uh, mutual aid calls for firefighting, which I felt was large, as large as since I've been serving in this position. This week, we're at fifty-two today, since Monday afternoon to present, so it's, uh, it's getting a little out of control. Right now, we currently have eighty percent contained in Beauregard Parish, the fire, but it is moving towards Maryville at present time, and there's a mandatory evacuation from Maryville at this time, and there's sheltering set up in DeRidder for that. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mays. Do we have any questions, Mr. Mays? Uh, Mr. Stelly.
The, the state operates twenty-four hours a day?
Correct. They do. They have the Emergency Operations Center open twenty-four hours a day down in Baton Rouge, it goes up, correct.
Uh, Mr. Markentail.
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to comment on this for some people who may not know, on these first responders, I know Ward Six gets twelve dollars to respond to these fires. So, when you see one of them, you ought to thank them, 'cause they're not doing it for the money. They get twelve dollars whether it lasts five minutes or ten hours. That's what they get paid, is twelve dollars to get up at one o'clock in the morning and make some of these calls.
Thank you, Mr. Markentail. Mr. Braim.
Uh, yeah, do you have, uh, any stats on, has anybody lost any homes or anything?
Uh, at this current time, there is, uh, there was no homes lost. There's approximately fourteen camps. It was a camp area there, they call it Tiger Island. Uh, they've got about fourteen camps that are lost.
So, nobody's displaced or...
Correct. Well, we got forty people that were out of the home in the Singer area, because it had jumped twenty-seven as of yesterday, and then we're looking at, uh, evacuating Maryville. That's probably approximately two thousand people in the Maryville area spread out through there.
Uh, Mr. Andrew Pont.
Would it be possible for us to have some public service address announcements reminding people that they're smoking in their car, not to, you know, throw their cigarettes out the window? I mean, it, I know one of the fires in Cameron occurred that way. It's just, I, I'm really surprised we haven't seen more of that, but it, the more that we can get that in front of the public, I, I think it would be in everyone's best interest.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Are there any other questions for Mr. Mays? Thank you for your report. Okay, we had a motion, uh, by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three E, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the provision of mental health services to parish inmates. Had a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Markentail. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on, three A.
Three F, adopt an ordinance confirming the police jury's membership in the Acadiana Watershed District and further approving the appointment of Mr. Terry Freelo as a member of the Board of Commissioners of said district. Got a motion by Mr. Rishard, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three G, adopt, uh, resolutions approving the following projects and annual payments in lieu of taxes. Number one, Arbers at the Lake Charles Project. Number two, Arbers at Bordeaux Project. Number three, Benoit Town Homes Project. Number four, Morningside at Gersner Project. Number five, Parkway Commons Project. Number six, Reserve at Power Place Project. And number seven, Sabine Trace Project. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three H, adopt a resolution approving a call by Waterworks District Number Four, of Ward Four, for an election to be held on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, to levy and collect a special tax of five point zero zero mils for the purpose of operating and maintaining said district's water systems constituting works of public improvement. Motion by Mr. Burley.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Tremonti, that's what we were looking for. Okay, is there any further discussion or any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three I, adopt a resolution approving the revised nomination structure for boards of the police jury-appointed special districts, sup- special service districts, and two, the designation of seats allocating membership on boards. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Markentail. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Three J, adopt a resolution approving a quitclaim deed related to the police jury's previous acquisition of property on WPA Road in Wards Four and Seven. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Where are we, Mr. Braim? Four A, adopt resolutions approving, uh, servitude agreements for the Moss Gully Improvements Project Task Two. Got a motion by Mr. Markentail, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four B, adopt a resolution approving a servitude agreement for drainage improvements related to the Rue de Amie subdivision. And a motion by Mr. Braim, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four C, adopt a resolution accepting... Are they named the same? Oh, we already did that, sorry. Four D, adopt a resolution approving a servitude agreement associated with the Nursery Street Bridge Replacement Project. Got a motion by Mr. Markentail, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. What did I miss? I knew I was gonna say I missed something, I thought I did.
Four C.
No, I'm sorry. I did, I did. They were named the same. Okay, that's what messed me up.
Two items on the same subject.
I can't even blame that one on you, I don't think, and normally I do, whether it's, whether it's your fault or not. I don't know if you've noticed that, Y'all.
I have noticed.
We are in motion number eight. You get blamed for everything.
I have noticed.
All right, four C, adopt a resolution accepting Rue de Amie subdivision located off of West Goche Road in Ward Three. A motion by Mr. Braim, second by Mr. Tremonti. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Rishard, did I pronounce that even remotely being correct?
No.
Well, Mr. Stelly would also know. Are they pretty close?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so now where are we, Mr. Braim?
Four E.
Adopt a resolution approving the parish's participation in the federal off-system bridge rehabilitation and replacement program agreement. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, and a second by, uh, Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none.
Mr. Barris.
Most, oh, Mr. Barris.
Rue de Amie. Moving on.
Motion carries. I think we're past, we're done that one. All right, let's go to four F.
Four F.
Adopt ordinances approving the purchase of the following properties through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Number one, eighteen forty-five Crawford Drive in Lake Charles. Number two, nine sixty-nine Terry Lane in Lake Charles. Number three, sixty-four fifty Aaron Drive in Lake Charles. Got a motion by Mr. Rishard, second by Mr. Tremonti on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Five A, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a request to the Louisiana Workforce Commission to transfer Title One B dislocated worker funds allocation to the Title One B Adult Program. Got a motion by Mr. Gilry, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Six A, adopt a resolution ratifying the submittal of a grant application for the continuation of the Truency Assessment and Service Center. Got a motion by Mr. Gilry, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven B, adopt a resolution accepting the parish-wide access control upgrade project as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on, seven A.
Seven A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven B, adopt a resolution accepting the parish-wide access control upgrade project as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on, seven A.
Seven C, advertise for requests for qualifications for project-based vouchers. Got a motion by, uh, Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven B, adopt a resolution accepting the parish-wide access control upgrade project as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven C, advertise for bids for mosquito control unmanned aircraft vehicle system. Got a motion by, uh, Mr. Barris.
Stelly.
And a second by, Mr. Stelly? And is, is there any discussion?
Got a question.
Any objection? Uh, Mr. Burley.
What would S U A V be used for?
Yeah, I think he was first, but I didn't realize. Please state your name and position with the parish.
Yes, uh, Scott Harrington, Op- Operations Manager of Mosquito Control. Uh, the address there is ten thirty-seven Tom Rotzen Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana. The, uh, spray zone, it's a spray drone, what we're gonna have, it's gonna be about twelve foot around. Think about it, it's gonna be, we're gonna use it really to spray parks and wreck fields and things like that. It has the capability to, uh, daltocide, to spray liquids, and it'll spray granular products like over marshes or areas that we can't get to by, you know, by truck or whatever, basically. So, and this, this will include the training for operation, and we have two employees that already got their one oh-seven licenses over. So, we're working towards getting this all done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Barris?
Ah, that's good, I like toys like that.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Right on.
That'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Get more of them.
Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven E, adopt a resolution on proposals for commu- community partners. Staff recommends a total community service block grant award in the amount of eighty
for these. That was the difference. When we had previously pushed them out, we didn't do a formal procurement, so we're going through that process now.
So, we have to do the process over again, or just gonna?
We are, but it's largely the same. So, we've notified the developers to just hold those proposals, and they can resubmit under this official RFP process, RFQ process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven D, advertise for bids for mosquito control unmanned aircraft vehicle system. Have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Stelly. And is there any discussion? Any objections? Mr. Burley?
What would SUV be used for?
Yeah, I think he was first, but I didn't realize. Please state your name and position with the parish.
Yes, Scott Harrington, Operations Manager of Mosquito Control. The address there is ten thirty-seven Tom Watson Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana. The spray zone, it's a spray drone that we're gonna have. It's gonna be about twelve foot around. Think about it, it's gonna be, we're gonna use it really to spray parks and wreck fields and things like that. It has the capability to dalticide, to spray liquids, and it'll spray granular products like over marshes or areas that we can't get to by, you know, by truck or whatever, basically. So, and this will include the training for operation. And we have two employees that already got their one oh-seven licenses already. So, we're working towards getting this all done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Barris?
Ah, that's good. I like toys like that.
Yeah, it's exciting. That'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven E, adopt a resolution on proposals for community partners. Staff recommends a total community service block grant award in the amount of eighty thousand dollars be accepted and rewarded as follows. Catholic Charities of Southwest Louisiana, ten thousand dollars. Evergreen Presbyterian Ministries, fifteen thousand dollars. Girlie Girls Mentoring Program, Inc., seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Project Build a Future, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Salt and Light Collaborative, Inc., ten thousand dollars. And the Literacy Council of Southwest Louisiana, Inc., ten thousand dollars. Got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven F, adopt the resolution on bids for the Mallard Junction Office Building Hurricane Repair Project. Staff recommends the bid of K and J Development of SWLA LLC and the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars be accepted. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Seven G, adopt a resolution on bids for the Gum Cove Bridge, Road Bridge Replacement Project. Staff recommends the bid of Matt L. Gwynn Construction LLC and the amount of two million four hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight A, adopt a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Reverend Ernest Walker. Mr. Braim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brother Walker, he, I think he was two weeks shy of ninety-nine years old. And so, can you imagine what kind of life a man led for ninety-eight years? I just can't, I can't imagine that. I knew Brother Walker. He was a, he was a great man. You know, you can't leave a lot, lot behind when you, when you, when you leave this world, but you can't leave a lot of memories. And he's got five great kids that he left a lot of great memories with. So, I appreciate y'all's support on this resolution, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braim. He served a long time on the act of the Ward Three Drainage Bill for many years and did a great job. He definitely will be missed. Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Braim, a second by Mr. Andrew Pott. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Nine A is just an advise item, advise that adjudicated property will be offered for sale by the Director of the Division of Planning and Development on Tuesday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. I got a motion by Mr.